Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, boys and girls. Welcome to the regular school committee meeting Monday, May 15, 2023, at 6:00 p.m. There is no need for exec-- well, excuse me. We need a salute to the flag. Mr. Walsh, well, you know, Dr. Knight. Let's do that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. No need for executive session at this time. School committee members and student reports, school committee chair report. I have nothing to report at this time. Resource committee.
Resource committee, we met Thursday afternoon and really all we did was go over the upcoming presentation, which is going to be made tonight by Mr. Roach, Mr. Jokala. That was it.
Okay, thank you. School building needs.
We haven't met, but I just have one comment. Dr. Knight. I'm not going to say anything right now, but Mr. Roach, I don't know if he's going to say anything now or maybe during his presentation, but he's done all the work, so I'm going to let him take all the thunder.
Sounds like good news.
Yes, it is.
Okay. Any questions? Seeing none, policy committee, Mr. Horgan is not here. Student support committee.
Nothing to report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any questions, concerns, comments? Seeing none. School personnel committee? Nothing at this time. Executive committee, nothing as well. Student representatives, take it away.
Good afternoon, fellow school committee members. Although not much has taken place the past couple of weeks, we still have, we have still experienced an eventual, eventful month thus far.
Firstly, this past weekend, our students, after waiting for so long, we were able to attend prom. This event was very special and super fun. Everyone had a blast being able to dress up and feel like their best selves with their friends.
Along with this, AP testing also took place the past two weeks, so students were able to finish off their AP courses. Shout out to students who worked hard and finished out their classes strong. With this, dual enrollment at school has also finished, and students were able to attain their college credits.
We'd also like to take the time to highlight our teachers and staff at the school. Teacher appreciation week and lunch staff appreciation was this past week, and we'd like to give them an amount, amount of thanks in, at this time. We have the best team, our hardworking individuals at Fitchburg High, and we all deserve their most appreciation.
Following this, last Saturday, May 6th, the program Step Up to Excellence came to the high school and worked outside for three hours cleaning up the trash around the school grounds. We'd like to thank them as well at this time for taking the time out of their busy schedules to come do something good for our school.
Last week and today, the high school was fortunate enough to have three principal candidates come to see the school. Students were able to sit down in auditorium and ask some questions about their experiences and what traits they have to offer to FHS.
An important message we'd like to note before ending, before ending is on Tuesday, May 23rd, the Fitchburg City Clerk will be at Fitchburg High School during lunches to help register 18-year-old students to vote. The next primary election will be in September, so it's important that everyone fills out their applications. Thank you.
Any questions? Dr. Knight.
Yes. Thank you all so much for that presentation. I've got, I believe, three questions. One of them, for teachers appreciation week, I remember Mr. Garcia, he was working there when I started working there 100 years ago. Did he get some type of special appreciation since he's probably the most or one of the longest teachers working there at the high school?
Oh my God, I think he probably should get a--
Definitely should.
Yeah. But at school, we did give out cards to all the teachers, so every student got to get a little envelope with a card, and we got to write a special note to teachers who have made an impact on us.
Wonderful. The second thing is, I, I went to the prom on Saturday, and I saw a lot of young girls and young boys. It was beautiful. They were dressed so nicely. It was just wonderful, and the food was awesome. So shout out or, you know, kudos to the organizers. It was wonderful. So I appreciate that.
Yes, thank you.
The third thing I wanted to say was, hmm, what was the third thing? There was a third thing I wanted to mention. So we did the appreciation, the prom, and, okay, lost my train of thought. But, you know, you guys are doing a good job. You keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yes, Peter.
Comment. Yes, I too went Saturday afternoon to Cog's Hall. My granddaughter was there and, but all the, all the young gentlemen, they looked handsome, and all the young ladies all looked very beautiful. And I said to a couple of seniors I know, I said, "I don't know if I'm going to recognize anybody Wednesday night at the alumni award ceremony," because they, they were all dressed up and taking pictures, and it was really a, a fun afternoon. And I know they had a great time at their prom on, on Saturday night. And I just hope a number of the, our graduates, Fitchburg High School, we hold our annual alumni meeting on Wednesday night. We will be honoring about 100 students who are going to be furthering their education. I'd like to see some of the graduates, alumni, show up Wednesday night. We like to honor our oldest graduates. So reminder, alumni meeting Wednesday night, 6 o'clock, Fitchburg High School. Thank you.
Yes, it's kind of timely since we're having civics presentation tonight by middle school students. The point that you raised about the city clerk, Joanna Bellotta, being up to high school for students who are eligible to vote, to register to vote, and I can't say enough how important it is that they do that and that even though it's, what's a preliminary election, their vote can make a difference who will be on the final ballot in November. It's a right that I think a lot of people take for granted, but it's a right that you can express your opinion of who you want to be a leader in the city of Fitchburg. And not only in Fitchburg, but wherever, if there are students there by school choice as well. So I'm glad you brought that up, and I hope that students listen to what you said and that when they come up that they register to vote, so that they'd be eligible either in the preliminary or the November final election. Thanks again.
Thank you.
Dr. Knight.
Yes, I remember the third thing. So you mentioned that, and I saw the, the, the agenda for the, the principal search, and as a previous member for a while of the interviewing committee, I just wanted to know if you personally were able to speak to the, were there any candidate of color within the group?
Um, no, there was none.
No.
How sad. I, you know, I can't stress anymore how important it is to get a representation of the student body, because we're in the, you know, high 70%, 70-something percent of students of color at the school, and studies are showing over and over that students become better problem solvers, more creative, they develop a desire to go to college and remain there until they graduate, when they're exposed to people that look like them, sound like them. And I'm not just talking about any and any person. Of course, a person who went to college and do as George Washington Carver suggested. Education is the key to unlock the golden door of freedom, as long as the person is highly qualified. But I, I think this committee is, is, is not ready to make a selection of who's going to be the principal, because they need to look deeper and be able to find a person that is a representation of the student body at the high school. It is so important. I, I know I mentioned this before, I noticed over at Goodrich Academy, I mean, it, it can be done. Nothing is impossible. At Goodrich Academy, there is 33% of people of color at this one school, just at this one school, which is more than the entire district. So we really need, I would like to see a search deeper, you know, and just not just take, you know, whoever, you know, comes in, search deeper. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any further questions? Approval of the minutes of the regular school committee meeting of May 1st, 2023.
Motion, we approve them.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, is unanimous. Thank you. Communications? I have none at this time. Public comment, anyone wishing to make public comment? Ms. Craigin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I originally came here to--
Sally, can you please introduce yourself for the people at home?
Oh, of course. Sally Craigin, city counselor at large, Fitchburg, Massachusetts, parent of students in our district. I wanted to congratulate Journey and Zoe. Thank you for making the announcement about, about the upcoming student voting opportunity registration, and thank you, Mr. Walsh, for speaking about that further. We have in the past, we have in the past had voter registration for students at the high school. I am really pleased that our wonderful city clerk and her team have May 23rd to come in during lunch hour, and I'd be positive we'll be bringing, sorry you, a therapy dog. So it's going to be a bit of a party and certainly attracting students. More importantly, the interest that these two young students have in how the city works and asking questions about city council was, as always, really impressive to me. I actually came here to speak on something on the agenda, which is the Washington DC field trip, and I just want to say that my older son attended this, and this was before COVID, and I want to urge all parents in the district, please, please, please have your child go. If you, I, it may be too late for, you know, pulling that, you know, making that happen, but this is transformational for all of our kids, some of whom have not done any kind of traveling, you know, since COVID, and some who have not traveled before. And you'll hear from Mrs. Fisher about the incredible enrichment that they will see, from the Martin Luther King monument to the White House, to the Capitol Building, to various museums. And I just wanted to say I was thrilled to see this, right? Yeah, I was thrilled to see this on the agenda, so I will leave it at that. It is always a pleasure to see my friends and colleagues on Monday night. And again, tell folks, tell kids at the school, if you guys text me, I'll send you our posters, which are in English and Spanish. So a week from Tuesday, it is going to be wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to make public comment? Mike? Yes, please.
Good evening. My name is Michael Pellent. I'm a former teacher in the Fitchburg Public Schools. I worked in the school system for 36 years, the last 13 as principal of Goodrich Academy, which was my pleasure. I really wish this evening I was here to recognize the accomplishments of our many students at Goodrich Academy. Kids that were going on to college, kids that were doing great things with the military, but that's not why I'm here. I really wish, again, that it was. Unfortunately, this evening, I'm here to talk about the activities that are happening with students and adults in the school system that many of you school committee members have no knowledge of. Many of you are unaware of this because it's being hidden by a few members of this very same community that, this committee that you are sitting on. Mr. Stevens, I'll ask you this question first, because you spoke about alumni night. Can you tell me why we've received no tickets? My mother, who is going to be 100 years old, looks forward to this every year. She didn't receive an invitation. My daughter, who was your only paying member when she graduated from high school, she didn't receive a ticket. And I feel badly because my conversations with my mother this morning, she said, "You know, I'd like to make a significant contribution to Crocker Field." I said, "Ma, that's not going to happen." Unfortunately, you have people that are working within this committee to do things behind other people's backs, and that's what's brought, what's brought this forward. Can you tell me about the tickets, Mr. Stevens?
Go ahead. We do not issue tickets to the Alumni Association meeting. We publicize it. And one of the glitches that's happened in the last few years, we used to send out the newsletter every year to every member that we had a record of. We only send them out now to the people who have requested to continue to receive the newsletter that we published on the annual meeting. Everything else is put on the website. So we have an older generation, such as your mother, who I always look forward to having her come and presenting her with a carnation at that meeting, and I could always count on her coming, and I think your mom was like 1939 that she graduated from Fitchburg High School, and always look forward to have her coming. So the younger generation, the recent graduates, are all getting the emails, who have left emails, and we have lost out on a number of the older graduates of Fitchburg High School who has not as technology sound in getting it. And we continue to discuss that and how to continue to reach the older graduates of Fitchburg High School. But it's, it's just an open meeting, it's, it's publicized in the paper, and I, it's not doing the trick, and I know that.
No, it's not, Pete.
I know, I know that, Mike.
Let's cut to the chase, all right? She always received an invitation from you people. You ought to be ashamed of yourselves if you're overlooking our senior citizens, because that's an oversight that just, there's no excuse for. None. I don't want to hear about meetings and people that wanted to do things, it didn't get done. Do I know if she's ever going to have a chance to go to another one? Let me repeat myself, 100 years old in June. She's supposed to guess when this is taking place? There isn't a person there with the meetings that you have, with the number of representatives that you have from the school system, that could have taken this on?
Mike is a--
She's just supposed to guess when you're having this?
Mike is a former member of the board, so he knows what, what we do.
Yeah, yeah. That's why I don't understand it, and that's why I don't believe it, unfortunately. There's something else going on, there's a reason why it wasn't sent, either someone just isn't doing their job, or we just said, "You know what? They're 80, they're 90, they're 100 years old." They'll see it online. Well, I have to be honest with you, my mother doesn't go online.
I, I realize that.
Well, if, if all of this is realized, Pete, then why?
I, I realize that. I know I have spoken, I have spoken about that in the meetings, Mike, and I'm only one, one voice of about 15 people, and I know what you're saying, and it's true, and I will not let it drop for our next meeting.
Oh, I'm not going to let it drop.
Oh, I know.
Count on that. I'm not going to let it drop. I'll be there Wednesday night with her, and I'm not going to go home quiet.
Mike, I'm, I'm right behind your mother. I'm almost 85. I know what you're talking about.
I don't accept this, Pete.
Yeah?
I don't, I don't accept it.
Okay.
It's wrong, it's got to be changed, it's got to be addressed. You know that you have approximately 10 to 15 members of that committee that go to meetings during the school year. One of them should have said, "I'll handle the invitations," which we always got, and now it's cost the city, because it's a significant amount of money that she wanted to give. Not a chance now.
Okay.
Not a chance.
I'm sorry, Mike.
I won't let her do that, because you don't deserve it.
Well--
As far as these adult behaviors that I spoke about to the school committee and the things that are being hidden from you, they ought to be ashamed of themselves, because you're on their committee. Though you have no clue as to what you're going to hear when this comes down, because they hid it. The mayor, the superintendent of schools, some choice members of the committee that got a chance to get this, this information, they got it, but not you. Look what you're doing with adult behaviors for students. Look at your modeling behaviors. We should be doing that all the time. It's expected from our students. If these students did what these adults did, they'd be thrown out of school, never to get another chance to get their education. I feel badly looking at you people tonight, because you have been cheated. You weren't one of the select members to have this invitation, or, excuse me, this information, and try to put it under the rug. How can we have any credibility with kids when we won't even walk our own talk? Kids look up to us as adults, because they don't get that at home, and it's been taken away now, because we're doing things to hide information and keep it away from the public and hope that it'll go away. This time, people, you need to say, "It will not go away." Again, if a student did any of these behaviors, thrown out of school. What are we doing with our adults that are? They're not losing jobs, they're getting second chances and third chances to hurt young people and to do what they've done in the school system. No one should be exempt from the rules. Laws and norms of our school system, no one. Not me as the principal, not the students, and not the staff. Every adult who had any part in this should be strictly accountable and held accountable by the highest measure of citizenship that we have, whether it be with our police department, although that's falling apart too, because somebody who was involved in what's happening now was involved with it then, and we let it go on. And what happened? It did it again. You let me get through it one time, why don't I try it again? You people ought to be ashamed of yourselves. You shouldn't have the jobs that you have, because people trust you in this town. Well, I know one that does it any longer, because you're not worth it. None of you. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. It was good to see some of you again. Unfortunately, it had to get to this, but this is where we are. I hope you have enough guts to tell the other members of the school committee what's been going on. I don't think you do. You don't have what it takes. You as the superintendent, you as the mayor, and you as a driving force on this committee, they don't count. I'm not going to say anything to the other members of the school committee. Let's see if we can sweep it under the rug and get away with it just one more time. Well, this time, you got caught. Thank you very much for your time. Sorry. I'll give you some help this time. Go. Okay.
Sorry if I get emotional.
Could you please identify yourself? I'm sorry.
I'm Michelle O U H. I didn't come here intending to speak, but I wanted to let you guys know that you all helped my son, Asa, have the education this year that he worked hard for. He was diagnosed right before the start of the school with a very aggressive form of leukemia. He's doing very well. He's had his bone marrow transplant, and I think a part of what helped him keep his drive and keep his positive attitude was the access to the education that he had worked so hard for. He had signed up for an AP course this year, and a lot of us, including my husband and myself, weren't sure if he would be able to handle that. But he fought and advocated for himself, and I was like, "Well, I can't ignore that." And we brought it to Assistant Superintendent Thompson, Superintendent Jokala, and we had a meeting via Zoom while my son had already started treatment with his guidance counselor and several other members at Southridge High, sorry, Fitchburg High. And I just want to say that, in that sense, I'm very proud of our district, that we support students that have a drive for education, that have a drive to make something of themselves. Because there was a teenage boy in the same hospital my son was in, and that district, he didn't, he was just as driven as my son, had hopes to have AP courses, and his district didn't support him in that. But this district supported my son, and because of that, he got to take his first-ever AP exam. He's nervous about how he did, but he's, he's that type. He's very self-critical anyhow. But I just wanted to thank you guys for supporting him in pursuing the education that he has set forth for himself. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Seeing none, moving on. Superintendent's report.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This evening, we have the eighth grade civic project presentation from the Memorial Middle School. So we have Ms. Kristen Sacks, Ms. Brittany Lavoy, principal, Mr. Sean Walker, assistant principal, here with several students. So I'm leaving it up to you, how you want to bring everybody up.
Thank you very much. Short. Hi, my name is Kristen Sacks. For those that don't know me, I teach eighth grade civics at Memorial Middle School. And for the past couple of months, all eighth graders at Memorial and Long Joe, and actually at the high school, a few select classes at the high school have been working on action civics projects. And Fitchburg, like many other districts, has teamed up with a program known as Generation Citizen that teaches civics, but really emphasizes the hands-on learning, the active participation experiences, and it really aims to empower young people to become active, informed citizens by providing them with the knowledge and the skills and the opportunities to make a positive impact on their communities. So students have been going through the process, and they've been identifying public policy, public policy issue, researching it, proposing alternative solutions, and then ultimately the goal is to take action on that issue. And it really is about systemic change, not a quick fix, and they have to work with some part of government, which really brings us to why we're here tonight. I have a group of students here that were chosen the issue of vaping as their policy. And, but before I turn it over to them, I just want to let you know that Fitchburg is having their first annual civics day, and I sent an email out to some of you, I'm not sure if you got it or not, but inviting you to the FPS Civics Day on May 31st. It's from 10 to 1:30. From 10 o'clock to about 10:30, we're having an opening keynote speaker, the mayor speaking, superintendent speaking, and from 10:30 to 12, the students' projects will be in the library for you to go in and ask them questions. There'll be student representatives there. You can go in and ask them questions about their project and what they're doing and their next steps. And then at the end, we're having a closing remarks and some awards. So I think you all just got the program that I kind of did a quick printout of, so you can peruse through that to see the different projects, and then I'm going to turn it over to this group.
Good evening. My name is Juliana Rodriguez, and I am an eighth grader at Memorial Middle School. Our purpose of coming here today is because our civics class is currently working on a Generation Citizen project, and our class had come to a consensus that vaping is a huge community issue.
Good evening. My name is Marcus O U H. To begin, every student interviewed a teacher and someone at home to determine what problems were most important. Then all students come to, came to a consensus on vaping being a problem. That was the most important. Our focus issue was first drugs in the city, but then, but what was then changed to vaping in schools. The root cause was that students were getting suspended instead of actually fixing the problem. Our goal was to change the policy so students could stay in school. Our targets were Mr. Walker, Ms. LaVoye, Fernandez, Ms. Rivers, and the school committee. Our tactics were emails, petition, holding a meeting, and a presentation.
Therefore, we believe the current vaping policy needs to be changed. The ongoing policy isn't educating or stopping kids from vaping. The current policy just sends the kids to a suspension for up to 10 days, and to be truthful, some kids don't, some kids like not being at school. So after their suspension, they will just keep on vaping. This isn't solving the vaping problem, and it just keeps getting worse each day. We want to help all kids and educate them on why they shouldn't be vaping for their own health.
Hi, my name is Peyton, and a proposal for a new policy is on the paper that she handed out. This new policy will positively affect the Fitchburg Public School students because it will allow students to stay educated while also giving them a punishment. Also, it will allow the teachers to help students overcome their addiction instead of sending them home to continue without any repercussions. This new policy will help students with their health and their education because it can keep them from furthering their addiction and make sure that they're continuing their education. Our goal when creating this policy is to keep students in school and help them get over any addiction that they've started because it's a behavioral issue, not a health issue.
Hi, my name is Christian Ramirez, and I'm here to talk about the education programs that are out there and that our district can use to educate the youth. So the project I looked at was a, was a education program named Vape Educate, and it specializes in helping people quit vaping in a quick time. This way, students don't lose any time in the classroom. Their testimonials state that most students complete the course in just a couple of days. It also appears to be highly effective on the students. A handful of schools have implemented this course, including regional schools like Wilmington High School. These schools seem to have problems similar to ours. We could implement this course into the policy. Pricing for this program differs with the amount of licenses purchased, and that's really all there is to say about it.
Going along with Kristen's point, another one of these programs is a program called I Decide. It's a program that's primarily used here in Massachusetts, and it is primary, like their focus issue is to educate the teenagers about like the effects of vaping and how to like, you know, quit it and like the benefits that it will cause on their health. And what they usually do is they have four modules, and they're each 75 minutes long, and they use like various forms of education to help these like people understand like the side effects of it and like the benefits that they will get from not vaping, you know? And yeah, that's really it.
Hi, my name's Jose Beretta, and I'm here to talk about the statistics that we found. So we found that about every one in four students in middle schools use vapes daily, and they use about 85% flavored vapes.
These are extras.
So there have been no reported changes in school-level e-cigarette control policies. On this paper that is being handed out, you can see that there's an increase in global of millions, and it will not stop until somebody takes action.
You supposed to ask any questions?
Any questions?
I have no questions, but just a comment. I'm very impressed. You guys should be very proud of yourselves. This is all what civics, what civics is about, and this just blows me away. I'm the chair of the policy committee, and I can definitely say, we'll bring this to the table, we'll look at it, we'll use your proposed policy, and we'll start from there, that language, and we'll go from there. And this is great. I have a lot, a lot of thoughts. Keep them coming. I mean, this is great. I'm really proud of you guys, and I hope you are, and I hope you guys see soon, and I'll communicate with your teacher and your principal and let you know when we update this policy, so you can see the fruits of your labor. And if there's any other, you know, ideas, positions you have, send us an email, come back, we'd love to have you. Thank you.
Very well done.
This thing's very impressive. What you did to get to tonight is, shows what is involved in terms of finding the facts, the statistics to support your case, and what can be done to not so much punish somebody, but to help them break the habit that they have. And I like the fact that you want to do things so that, in a way, they're not penalized by not being in school, which only sets them back even further. So I'm, as Mr. Horgan said, I'm very impressed with the process that you went through and how you presented it to us tonight. And I look forward to sometime this year, maybe voting on a new policy regarding vaping. Thank you very much.
Is this restorative justice?
What is it?
Restorative justice.
It's in the same vein. I'd say so.
Very good.
I too. I want to echo what my colleagues have already said on the council, I mean, on the committee. I just want to thank you for the courage that you have to come forward, to be able to take on any initiative that you feel is very, very important to you as you represent the remainder of your student body. And I just want to tell you, I thank you, I appreciate you, and I look forward to, you know, conversing back and forth on this, not just this topic, but a number of other topics that I know that you think, you feel are very, very important to you. And it's you that we serve, so we really, really need to continue to hear what your concerns are. Thank you.
Just want to echo that last comment that he had about courage, right? And that really is one of the biggest missing factors. There's so many people have good ideas, and the missing factor for them to get those ideas on the pavement, to make them actionable, is the courage it takes to stand up and say something. You saw the gentleman before that came up, and he had his own issues that, you know, when you come up in front of the committee and say that, it takes courage regardless of what your position is. And I'm sure you'll find, you know, this policy seems to be a no-brainer, I'd say. Your argument was very well made, very articulate, and it seems to make sense to me. And it seems like there's a lot of other issues that you guys are talking about, which I'm sure had very lively discussion, and you'll see that there's a lot of debate. And I think you'll see throughout the process how courage plays a role in civics and how important it is. So keep it up, keep being courageous, and hope to see you guys soon.
Just like the big comment, Mrs. LaVoye, that we have all of their names and grades so that when Mr. Horgan brings this forward, it could be this fall, that no matter if they're at Fitchburg High School or still at Memorial, that everybody gets an invitation to come back and participate when we approve there.
That sounds great.
Excellent.
One last thing, I just also want to thank Ms. Sacks for having this class and guiding the students, and I, and I think it's, I think it was just last year that the state required civics to be taught, and I think it's an important lesson for not only students in middle school, but for many adults as well. So thanks again, and thank you very much. Appreciate it.
And I just think it's great that you were here tonight as part of civic engagement. You watched two people come up here, or three people come up and make public comments. We normally don't make any comments when somebody comes up at public comments. I was just answering questions from Mr. Pellon about when the alumni meeting was going to take place, but normally that doesn't happen, and but you were here tonight to actually see what was taking place as a civic engagement. So we really appreciate you seeing that. Thank you.
So can I ask Ms. Sacks how you selected this group, this topic, to come forward? Because as I flipped through all the other projects, there's a lot of worthy projects and...
So they, the students choose the policy. They start out, I think they gave you the hourglass. They start out with community interviews where they go out and they, they can interview their parents or, you know, whoever, and then they gather up that information as far as all of the community issues that they find. From there, then they start debating, and they come to consensus on one issue, and then they really narrow it down to a focus issue. So for this group, they had, I think they had drugs, they had discrimination, they had school safety, I think, was in there. There was something else in there too I'm missing.
Roads.
The roads. Oh, yes, the roads. Would the roads come up? Roads come up often.
Sorry, I had to bring it up. I'm sorry.
They come up often, yes. We have a group working.
Why two groups?
So, but they actually chose this because I think a lot of them were noticing going into the bathrooms, they were afraid to go into the bathroom. So it was also a school safety thing, and so they noticed that there was like, you know, I think they, how they put it was 16 feet in a stall, and they're afraid to go into the bathrooms because people are in there vaping, and it's becoming a problem. And they noticed that they're being suspended, and it's just not changing it. So from there, they debated, and they started to do their research, and they looked, and they sent emails out to people. They did send some emails out to schools, the different schools that were working on this type of policy. Of course, we didn't hear back from them, that's always a struggle, but they did send those emails out and got that information, and they just decided that this is what they wanted to do. They also had for their next steps, did you guys want to talk about the buyback program? Or you want me to? No? I guess I'll tell you. So their next steps were obviously the policy, but also they were thinking about having a vape buyback program like once a year, kind of like, like a gun buyback program where once a year, people can bring in the vapes, and if we worked with the Board of Health and the police, and getting some gift cards for people bringing in the vapes, but they'd also have to go through one of those programs before they get the gift card. And so they were really thinking about that on top of the policy, maybe at least once a year. But really, it's all about the students, and they run the show, and they do all the work, and they do the research, and I just send out the emails because they can't send them out themselves, and that's about it. So, yeah, very proud of them.
Excellent. Well done.
Sorry, I know we're running long, but I'm so proud of them, I can't help myself. So they invited Mr. Walker, myself, Ms. Ugeronimo, to a town hall in their classroom, and they sat me down, and I think it was Miguel and Jose are some of the most intense interviewers that I've ever had. And so they, they said to me, "You're sending kids home from school because of this issue. Why?" I said, "Well, frankly, it's against our policy, it's against our code of conduct. I have to instill the families that kids aren't accessing this sort of material in our school." And they looked me in the eye, and they felt like they were empowered enough and well-researched enough to say, "We don't buy that that's in the best interest of our kids, so we have to think about it differently." And they brought the research to me, and they said, "We have to work together, and we have to be better." And it was just like, it was the best moment. So I just wanted to say how proud I was of you guys.
Wow.
This is, Mr. Superintendent, I just, I want to just salute you for championing this initiative and allowing them to do this, because this is what empowerment is all about. This is how you get the next generation and the current generation involved, you know, empowering them to use their voice, but use it in a constructive way where it affects change. When you talk about change, you want to, change comes on a policy level, not from screaming and rah rah rah, but when you really want to see change, you're learning the exact way it takes to make change happen. And again, I just, kudos to you guys, man, that's awesome, really awesome.
So thank you, Mr. Hughes, for those comments. I think, you know, today, it's the school committee. I know there are some issues here, and we won't bring up the issue that received some chuckles, but maybe tomorrow night it's city council, and, you know, maybe in a couple of years, these students will be sitting across from the governor and her administrative team, just like our school committee reps were not too long ago. So you're right, it's about empowerment, about, it's about hearing the voice of the students, how change happens, and, you know, if you don't, if nobody speaks up, there will be no change. So sharing your story and what the needs are is extremely important, so.
Okay.
Great job.
Now, making a field trip to the heart of democracy in the United States, here we have Mrs. Fisher to come up and talk about the Washington, D.C. overnight trip.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me. I'm very excited. We haven't had the D.C. trip for two years because of COVID. We have 101 students that are paid in full and registered. We have 12 staff that will be attending. We're leaving June 4th at 6:30 in the morning. We need everyone there at quarter of 6:00 to 6:00 a.m. Then we'll be heading on on the buses and heading into Washington. We plan to get to Washington around 4:30 in the afternoon. We like to travel on Sundays because we skip a lot of the crazy New York traffic, and Washington's really wide open on Sundays and Mondays because people don't really start getting to work until Wednesdays during the week in Washington. So we really have the city to ourselves on Sundays and Mondays. So we'll do, Sunday night, we'll do a tour of all the, we call it the illuminated tour. We'll hit the Lincoln Memorial, Vietnam Memorial, Korean War Vet Memorial, World War II, and the Eisenhower Memorial, all in that section by the basin, and then we'll head to the hotel and check in. Then we're, day two, we're going to be seeing Arlington National Cemetery and seeing the changing of the guard, which is one of my favorite, favorite things to do. It's really powerful, and the kids get to see, we do a walking tour through the cemetery. We see where the Kennedys are buried. There's all sorts of different gravestones that we visit and pay honor to. We go to, over to Iwo Jima and check that out. Then we actually have tickets this year, which I'm thrilled about. This is the first time I'm going to be able to go to the National Museum of African-American History, so we're able to get tickets, and that, those are a hot item to get. With a group this large, it's really hard to get tickets, so the company that we're working with really did a nice job securing our tickets. Then we head over to the White House for some picture-taking, and they get to see where the White House is located, and the kids are always floored that it's really smaller than they think because it looks really big on TV. Then we do another illuminated tour on Monday night. We will hit Jefferson, the FTR Memorial, which is my favorite because you walk through it, and it's just a really great historical piece to see, the Martin Luther King Memorial and the Law Enforcement Memorial. We do do the Nurses Monument as well, which I think is really important to pay homage to our nurses. Then the last, this last day, we go to the Capitol Building and have our picture taken on the backside of the Capitol Building, and the kids get a really nice souvenir picture of everybody in their D.C. shirts, and it's, it's a well-run machine that we get that big picture with 100 kids on the steps. Then we're heading up Embassy Row, and the tour guides will talk about what happens on Embassy Row and what that's all about. Then we head to the National Zoo, so they'll do some touring at the zoo, and that's really a fun trip for the kids. Then we actually, we head down to the Smithsonian's and do a couple of the Smithsonian's, and then we walk over to the Holocaust Museum, which we have tickets for as well, which is, those are hard to get as well, so we have a reservation there. So it's kind of a, you know, we kind of do the fun museums, and then we hit kind of a heavy museum, and the teachers have done an excellent job preparing the students for that museum trip. And then we take a ride up to the Washington Nationals Field, and we go watch a baseball game, so kind of do something really heavy, and then we go to the baseball games, kind of lighten up the night. And then we're heading out Wednesday morning, we'll stop, they'll have breakfast at the hotel, then we'll stop for lunch on the way home, and we'll be back in Fitchburg by 7:30 Wednesday night. And, parents, please be on time to pick up your kids. Everyone's usually really good, though. By the time we get into Worcester, the kids usually say, you know, text your parents saying we're half an hour out, make sure they're there at Memorial. So the parents are usually really excited, we get this big cheer, it's really kind of fun to get that recognition. It's really kind of fun to get that recognition from the parents. And then the tour company actually changed the hotel on us last week. So parents, just note, I know the coordinators who've done a dynamite job, brand new, never been to Washington. Sean is, Mr. Walker's coming with me to kind of train our new coordinators that are at the schools. They've never been. This is a real green group, so we got our work cut out for us. We'll be, we'll be fine. But parents, we are going to be staying at the Best Western in Springfield, Springfield, Virginia. It's 670, 6721 Commerce Street and the phone number will be on the paperwork that's going home. So that was a last minute change. Something's going on at the hotel, they said, that they didn't think it was okay for kids. So that's what I love about this company. They really think about, they cater to middle school kids, they know what we need. So there've been a few complaints with other school districts and they said, Jen, we're just going to move you guys. So I'm really excited about that. I think this might be my last trip. I'm trying to pass the torch on to, my job is getting so big, but I'm trying to pass the torch on and we have some really great coordinators. I, I'm blown away. They're just doing a dynamite job and they're very well organized and they already can't do anything, so we have ideas for next year, we're all ready to go. So I can guide them next year and hopefully hand over the reins to a younger generation because I think this will be my 28th trip, so I think it's time. Any questions?
Sounds wonderful.
Yeah, we'll have a great time.
I'm impressed that you got tickets to the two big things.
Yeah.
That's a, I've been to the Holocaust Museum, it's a very, I don't know what word it is, but it's a learning experience.
Yeah. It's powerful. It's a very, you actually feel when you're there, I cry every time I leave there because they have, the very last part is they have survivors that talk and it's a video. I tell the kids all the time, I'm going to be stopping, so just get ready for it, you know? So that's why we like to do something a little bit light afterwards. So the baseball game's always fun.
That's a, that's a great time. You get great seats and you can't believe the cost of what you pay there in Washington versus Boston.
I know. It's insane. When I first started this trip in 1993, it was $175 per kid and it's just gone up incrementally since then. So the price of fuel goes up, insurance, the bus, the drivers have even more restrictive rules. Like we used to be able to kind of make random stops if we needed to. They're being monitored by GPS, so they can't really veer too far from what's lined up. And we're using Wilson Bus Tours who are outstanding. They move, maneuver those big, huge buses through the city like crazy. So I really made an effort to make sure we get that bus company because they're so good and they're local, so we like to...
I think when we started at, Jen, in 85, it was only $125.
It's insane. And the kids, the kids have been selling stuff too, so they've been fundraising and we'll work on that. We're going to, now that we have a, now I have a crew that's been, that's gone a year, we'll do it again.
One thing to remember, when you get to the Washington Monument and you're facing the Washington Monument, you want to be on the right-hand side facing the Washington Monument. I, the Tomb of the Unknown Soldier.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, the Tomb of the Unknown Soldier. Because when they do the changing of the guard...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
They come out on the right-hand side, they do all the inspection of the rifles and everything on the right-hand side. So if you get, think you're getting front row seats over on the left-hand side, you're going to miss everything because it's to your right.
It always depends, like when we go in June, because like Oakmont went, the overlooked students went in April, there's a lot less school groups down there. So we used to have to like really try to get there early and it depends on how long the kids take, because we have to walk up to the Tomb of the Unknown Soldier, so it's pretty steep. Some of the kids kind of drag their wagons, but we get them up there. But we do have a good time, so.
Do we have any eighth graders here going?
Any of you going? Oh, fantastic. Just ordered your shirts.
We're going to have a great time.
5:45.
Yeah, it's a wonderful time.
It's so much fun. Bring snacks.
Great, great, great learning experience too. Thanks for doing this, Jen.
No problem. Any other questions?
Thank you.
No problem. Good night.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. Can we move that, that's on tonight?
Yeah.
The Washington trip, isn't it on here tonight?
It is, yeah. It's the first one.
Yeah. You want to do it now? Yeah, that's, well, yeah. It's the wish of the committee to vote on the final approval for Washington DC overnight trip. Make a motion to approve it.
Prove it.
Motion made and seconded to approve, what it was, 23-265. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, as you demand. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So what I'd like to do now is just give a brief update on the Pittsburgh High School principal search. Last week and this week, we interviewed three candidates that were recommended by the initial interviewing team. Zoe, as you were on the initial screening team, correct me if I have the numbers right or wrong. We had 14 applicants and there were eight individuals selected for an interview and out of those eight, the committee recommended three candidates to go forward.
Yeah.
Okay. So last Wednesday, Thursday, and today, we held all-day interviews, which comprised of each candidate having a Q and A session with, with students in the auditorium. I know Zoe, you were there all three days. Thank you. Meeting with the assistant principals, staff, central office, and ending the day with a one-on-one with myself. So I just want to thank the search committee for forwarding three qualified candidates, moving them forward. I think the interviews were a great learning process and as we were talking about having voice heard, I, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I certainly heard a lot of good questions from the students and the students did a great job helping vet who the right candidate may be to lead Pittsburgh High School next year. So I want to thank you and I guess on behalf of all the students for, for doing your part because it is important, because one of the things that you can do as students, whether it be on this committee or in the school, is express your voice. So thank you.
Thank you.
So I think just last thing, my anticipated goal would be to make a, an announcement by the end of the week. So that's, that's the update on the high school principal search. So next, tonight, we have the first reading of the fiscal year 24 budget.
Yep.
Mr. Roach is going to, if I can extend, give you a little bit more.
Thank you. That should do it. Cord here.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, this is only about 65 slides, so I hope you have another bottle of water. Just kidding here. I want to thank Mr. Roach and really all the principals for putting in time to assess what our student needs are. As everybody knows, we're emerging from a pandemic. There's a lot of needs our students had and we've discovered over the last few years. We are very fortunate in Pittsburgh in that for the first time in, well, maybe it might be forever, we have adequate financial resources to go out and hire the staff that we need to meet the student needs. I know in my former role, there were many years when we were actually cutting. So with the Student Opportunity Act passed, districts like Pittsburgh have a lot to look forward to in terms of what we can offer our students. And it's not just about passing or getting higher accountability scores, although that's, that's certainly important. It's preparing our students to be well-rounded citizens when they graduate either Pittsburgh High School or Goodrich Academy. So with that said, you know, our goals and commitments really center around a handful of themes, equity, access, opportunity, growth, and achievement. And really, our theory of action is, starts this off in terms of if all staff...
Uh-oh.
This is, yeah, this is where Mr. Roach, as you've seen with Mr. Thompson, it's a, it's a very sensitive connection.
Tight, yeah.
If all staff, family, and community partners collaboratively identify and remove barriers to personal growth and achievement, then every student will be ready to learn and access high-quality core instruction and social emotional support. This is something that's been shared with the committee and the community extensively over the last year and is almost part of our, every, every presentation that we make. What we have is a half dozen commitments that help guide our decisions. Just again, quickly, curriculum that's accessible and reflective of all our students, a tiered system of academic and social emotional supports district-wide, staff development and a diversity recruitment plan. It's almost like timed, after I speak, it goes dark. You know, I can maybe bring it up on my computer as well here.
Technical. There we go.
Sense of welcoming and belonging for students, parents, staff, and all members of the community and community and stakeholder engagement. So I'm not going to read through the entire mission. It really just elaborates the theory of action. But again, one of the things that we, the school committee approved a year or so ago, it was last May, was our values of being growth-focused, vulnerable, trustworthy, adaptable, and collaborative. And again, just in summary, growth-focused, as, you know, going to paraphrase Dr. Knight, but we all want our students to do not only better, but the best as they possibly can. We want to be there to support them. Vulnerable, in this case, it's, as we've tried to define it in our terms, is it's not about strength or weakness, but about, really about being honest and that we all can improve. Trustworthy, what we say we're going to do, we're going to do. Adaptable, times are always changing, so whether there's a pandemic, post-pandemic, or whatever the economy throws at us, we, we change with the times and do the best we can. And lastly, collaborative. This, this work does not happen as a result of one person or one small group of people. Again, from the theory of action, it takes a partnership of parents, teachers, and the community to, and students, and to make this all successful. So what the Department of Ed, the state, has a education formula that all districts across the Commonwealth have to adhere to. That's commonly known as net school spending. Basically, that's composed of two, two items. One is Chapter 70, which is the state's term for financial aid to communities for education from the state, and then city contributions, which is revenue that the city is responsible for from its own sources. When you add those two together, you get required net school spending and for next school year, fiscal year 24, that number totals 96,678,430 cents. So looking back over the last, well, looking ahead one year and looking back four years here, you can, we can all see that the impacts of the Student Opportunity Act, this is year three, so year one was FY '22 where it increased by 3 million from 77 million to about 80 million. And then the current year, when it went from 80 million to 88 million. And now for next year, it increases just under 8 million to a little over 96 and a half million. Again, the Student Opportunity Act and the foundation budget, again, this is how much on an incremental basis that has, that total number has increased, as I mentioned earlier, almost 8 million increase in each of the last, this current year and for next year. Basically on flat enrollment and we're going to talk about that. So one of the things that we have to make a commitment to, to the state is, well, how are we going to use these funds? And we have to identify three leverage areas to invest these funds. One is supporting educators, our teachers, to implement high-quality aligned curriculum. Second is inclusion co-teaching model for students with disabilities and English language learners. And that's something that we've been doing now for the last two years and looking to continue to expand that. And also expanding our internal capacity staffing to address social emotional learning and mental health needs of students and families. And as I mentioned earlier, that couldn't be more important now coming out of a pandemic. As part of the budget process, we solicited feedback from parents, students, and faculty on the best ways to achieve these funds. Again, as we heard earlier from, from the students, school safety, we've formed a safety task force this year. That task force has been meeting monthly, led by Mr. Roach, members of the Pittsburgh Police Department, parents and staff as well. So, you know, safety, not only physical, but also creating emotional safety, as, as we talk about social emotional learning and having our schools be welcome and belonging environments, is a high priority for us. So I think that's the main, just there. So this, to the, to the reader, may seem a little small, but I think in summary, the takeaways here are, and Mr. Roach, if I don't remember the exact number here, the column that's highlighted in bold, I'll call it Pittsburgh Maroon, identifies the amount of funds that we're receiving as a part of our overall budget of 96 million that just relate to our students being identified or classified as low-income. And I think that number, is that 25 million?
It's actually, yeah.
Or 29 million.
Thirty percent of the budget overall.
29 million, excuse me. I can see it closer over here. So almost 30 million, a little less than a third of the funding that we're receiving is, for the total budget, is related to that. And then there are other categories that the budget is broken down into in terms of high school, English language learners, high school and vocational learning, that's just a half a million. So you can see the difference in different categories of how much is the state and the formula, so to speak, aligns with what we're doing. And just to move your eyes to the upper left-hand corner, the box that's shaded in light blue, there are 12, I guess, low-income classification categories that the state has to determine the amount of aid that it provides the community. Pittsburgh is in the group 11 out of 12, where our low-income percentage is between 70 and, well, 79.99%. So that's where we're at. We're about 120 students short of being in category 12, which would be an 80% reimbursement. And if we were to achieve that, that would probably involve another couple million in...
2.8 this year.
Almost $3 million more this year. So here we, and this is a slide that we've shared in the past, but as this is the first, first reading, it's, it's really worth sharing again. So here, here are two trends. The one in, I think, light pink or pink column is the per pupil in thousands, where if you go back to fiscal year 20, it was just under $13,000 of per pupil spending per year. And now for next year, it'll be a little over $17,000 per student per year. Then again, the, again, Pittsburgh Maroon bar is for the percent low-income of overall foundation budget. So as Mr. Roach said, the, the number is a little less than a third, just about 31%. And comparing and contrasting to what it was now back in 2020, which we're looking forward one year, but looking back four, so it's over a period of five years, it was 20, almost 23%. This, this table is really just a high-level summary of the, the foundation budget, that's also known as the net school spending budget, and that overall, the net dollar amount increases about eight and a half percent for the budget. Again, when you look at the enrollment, our enrollment for this year, slight increase, three students. For the past few years, we've been pretty stable. We've had small increases or decreases, but this year we have an increase. And the real benefit of Student Opportunity Act is that Chapter 78, which again, that, that amount alone is increasing almost six and a half million or about nine and a half percent. And again, going back to the formula of Chapter 78, which is funding from the state and then the required local contribution, the, the portion from the city increases just a little less than 1.4 million or a little under 7%. So again, you can see that the required net school spending increases a total of about 7.8 million or about a little less than 9%. The next line we have on this table is the indirect charges costs. There are two things that we, that really make up the budget. There are the direct costs, which are the costs that we administer from a department perspective in terms of salaries, you know, head count, transportation, items like that. Then there are items that are held at the city level in terms of health insurance, retiree benefits, school resource officers. So that really is, you know, those are just a few of the examples that are part of the indirect costs. And when we have the budget... And when we have the budget book finalized, we'll have a full accounting of that. That's something that comes out of the city auditor's office. So when we look at what we call our direct spending budget, this is not only the, I'll call it the direct cost, but we add in school transportation. That's a cost that's, that the city has consistently provided for the school department. That is not part of the net school spending formula, but given a community's, you know, geographic terrain and distance of our schools from population centers, it's something that is, is critical to bringing our students to school every day. And as you can see now, for, for next year, there's about $150,000 increase, but we're almost at $7 million of transportation. And that's not just the, the big yellow buses that you see driving around our streets, but that's also the, the smaller van-based vehicles that bring students to our schools and to schools outside our district for students whose IEPs require that. Then also, just kind of on a smaller dollar level, the, the school department, transportation, clerical, and crossing guards are, are also excluded. So really, when we look at what's our, what's, what's the budget that we try to meet from a direct spending perspective, that amount increased from about $67 million to a little less than $73, or almost $5.8 million between last year and this year. So again, you know, as I mentioned earlier, and what will be included in the budget book for, for next year is, you know, some of the indirect costs. And I, I think what's, you know, relevant here is that the health insurance for active employees increased from about 7.4 million and a little less than 7.5 million to almost 8.7 million, a million and a quarter change for the, for the upcoming year. You know, this current year, we actually had a little bit of a health insurance holiday. Again, I'm not part of the PEC, but again, that, that fluctuates year by year, whether it goes up or down, and I think based on claims as well. That's, that's an area where I think somebody could give a much more detailed explanation than I, but that, I think, is the summary just of that. Again, looking at, you know, some more of the, the related expenses, and again, this is for, you know, up here, we have retired employees. The school department does pay a portion of that as an indirect cost. Again, these are expenses that are held and managed on the city side of the ledger, so to speak, but are eligible as part of the overall school spending formula. You know, and as mentioned in the earlier slide, health insurance went up there. Likewise, it went up here about $200,000 on that front. You know, then looking at, you know, where our students are going in terms of especially school choice, but also charter schools, you know, school choice relatively flat, I mean, small increase of just under $8,000. Charter school tuition decrease of just under $90,000, but also the charter school reimbursement decreased by just under $300,000 there. So this one is, gives a lot more detail of school choice. I know in the past, there have been committee members who ask, you know, for school choice, how many, how many students, what's the trend? From the Department of Ed website, which is really only current from, to 2022, this year is not final, and we don't necessarily know next year's numbers yet, although the state makes a projection. You can see that for the receiving tuition, that number has been increasing over, over the last few years, where now, I think, we have, again, if my eyes are failing me here, was it 202.7?
A little over 200, yep.
And a little bit less than 1.3 million, is that 1.28?
1.28.
Coming in. And that's, the school choice funds come in, are funds that are overseen directly by the school department, that's separate from the budget that's voted on. And as was previously voted on at a prior school committee meeting, we've pledged $5 million of school choice funds towards the Crocker Project, if necessary. Lastly, then, the other side of the ledger are, are students going out. And again, if you look at the difference between 2017 and 2022, that number has, has decreased, again, is it 441 to 371?
Yep.
So I think that, you know, the quality of the education that we're providing our students, more families are making the decision to keep their students here in Fitchburg. So again, who we are, every school is a little unique and has a little bit different logo, brand, and, and it's good to see the different, different logos represented here, so...
Guess which one is the dragon?
Yeah.
Does anyone know? It's the newest, it's the newest school mascot.
The, the new Crocker?
Nope.
No?
Crocker's the Cubs.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
I don't know.
South Street.
Nope. South Street is kind of still trying to figure out if they continue with the, with the Rockets or not. So they are represented with that F kind of South Street Early Learning Center.
Got to be McKay, then.
McKay Dragons, yes.
McKay Dragon.
Students and staff chose that this year.
What were they?
The Ligers, previously.
The what?
Which I think is from Napoleon Dynamite, it's a combination of a lion and a tiger together. It's like a magical beast. So they chose another magical beast, but a little more traditional one, the dragon.
And this one looks like it's very friendly, too.
It's a friendly dragon.
It's a welcoming and belonging dragon.
Sitting on the pile of gold, although we are talking about that tonight.
So again, just as a reminder to members of the committee and the community, looking at our, our demographics, just quickly, how students identify and how we compare to the state. Again, on a, on a diversity basis, roughly 75% of our students identify as students of color versus the state would, would be about 46%. And again, selected populations, these are terms used by the Department of Ed, probably could be a little bit more, I guess, user or reader-friendly, but they are what they are. And, you know, first language, not English, again, just comparing us to the state average, 37 to 25% for the state. English language learners, 17.2% versus 12.1%. Low-income, and as I mentioned earlier, that little box in the left-hand corner of a prior slide, we're at 73.5%. Again, we're in that 70 to 79.99 category versus a state average of about 42%. Students with disabilities at 24% versus state average of 19.4%, and high needs of 81% versus state average of 55.1%. So the reason that we included this is really, as, as called out under the Student Opportunity Act, some of our students in these categories, we need to be able to provide more support. It's something that took years of advocacy at the state level. And finally, I think it was four or five years ago, the legislation was passed and corresponding, the funding to meet the goals of the legislation were passed. Okay. So when we get down to now, a little bit more granular here, and the school budget for next school year, our direct spending budget is just under $80 million, $79,864,000. You know, the largest component of that is salaries. We're in the third year of all our labor unit contracts across the district. And so when we roll over all our salaries, we're looking at about a little over $51.5 million, 51, almost $51.7 million. And then, you know, then there's kind of other, which includes capital expenditures, instructional supplies, but also probably the biggest amount of that $22 million is the out-of-district and special education cost increases, which are projected, well, they're projected to increase by 14%, but then there's supposed to be a 12% offset. So even accounting for that offset, you know, out-of-district tuitions are increasing, and the state's trying to recognize the, all communities across the state, not just the communities that are benefiting from Student Opportunity Act like Fitchburg is. So when, when we look at that and the projections, we have $74 million, actually, maybe, and then I guess the 74 million, Mr. Roach, the projections for, the difference between the 74, the projections and the school budget, just remind me on that.
Yeah, from, from the 79,864 budget that, you know, after we've figured out the chargebacks and indirect costs, with what the projections are for rollovers and some of the investments that we are going to place into capital improvements for the buildings, we're going to support a lot of those projects we'll talk about briefly here. In addition to, as Superintendent Jokula said, you know, we do expect at least a half a million dollars increase on that special ed out-of-district assessment amongst some other things. The differential now is, is at about $5.6 million. That's a good place to be as opposed to other years, I know, when we've been in this work before, when it was much thinner, if, if anything at all, after the salary rollover and some of those things. So, so that's, that's where we are now, and we are working with the principals and the directors for the various programs and departments in the school to, to, you know, propose new positions, so I don't know if you...
Yeah, so this, this slide has a lot of text on it, but I'll try to summarize it as succinctly as possible. So as Mr. Roach was saying, we've, we've met with the principals of all our schools and had conversations at central office. So what we're sharing with you tonight is really, I'll call it, proposed new positions. These are needs across the school district, so whether they're at, you know, Fitchburg High School, and we can go down each school and quickly talk about each school's hiring plans, at least as they stand right now, and the estimated impact to the budget. But again, we're receiving the, this historic level of support from the Commonwealth and the community to help meet our students' needs and, you know, not only academic, but social, emotional, but also providing opportunities to the students as well. So kind of quickly, you know, starting at Fitchburg High, and this is just going top to bottom, looking at adding literacy-reading specialists, an additional choral staff member of, is that .4? Or is that a 1.4?
.4 for fine art.
And for .4 for fine art.
Apparently a part-time fine art teacher there, and that would make that a whole one, a full-time position.
And one teacher, English second language teacher. Goodrich, looking to add an English second language teacher and a dean of students. At Long's Joe, literacy-reading intervention, math intervention, English second language, clinical intervention. Memorial, two math intervention teachers, one English second language, one clinical intervention. Crocker Elementary, math intervention. Due to the enrollment over at Crocker, adding another second grade teacher and a fifth grade teacher in addition to an English as second language teacher. At McKay, three math intervention teachers, two English second language teachers, one special educator. Reinhold, three math intervention, one literacy-reading intervention, one English second language, one clinical intervention. South Street, our new early childhood learning center. We're looking at, it's called a director of early childhood, that will really, because that's kind of the, I'll say, the Unit B contract terms, but that person, that role would report directly to the principal at that school and really function more as an assistant vice principal, just focusing on the, the pre-K students. Again, special, another special education, staff member, two literacy-reading interventionists, two pathway teachers, again, special education, and one crossing guard. And then lastly, at, at the district level, we're looking at a social, emotional learning director, two RBT behavioral therapists, BCBA behavioral adjustment counselors.
Board-certified behavior analysts, yep.
STEM, science, technology, engineering, math coach for K through 8 grade level, looking for clerical support for school building maintenance, that, and enrollment. So that, at least for school building and maintenance, that was a position that existed, I'll say, about 10 years ago or so, and also just the needs in enrollment. In technology, two IT paras. Again, as we're, we added about 52 positions last year, and again, so far, we have planned about 47. That's almost 100 positions over two years, in addition just to the normal hiring transition of about, it was about 42 last year, and the recruiting and hiring that we're trying to do. We only have, you know, one person handling full-time, we're implementing a new system. Clearly, we want to be able to be responsive to our, our schools, but also to the staff who are, want to come work for Fitchburg. We want to make sure that their onboarding experience is as smooth and as welcoming as possible. And lastly, to, with the district our size, now we have the ability to look for an athletic trainer to help our athletic teams be in the best, you know, competitive shape possible so we can compete with other districts. So when we add, I think, all those positions up right now, and again, this is not final, we're just under three and a half positions, about 47 positions, again, just trying to put it in the various units, I think we're looking at 11 in Unit A, was it two in U... Maybe am I reading it wrong here, Jeremy?
For the, for the district positions, you know, the, for the schools, those are really teaching positions. Those are all, by and large, with the exception of the crossing guard, teaching roles. For the district, there are some different roles noted, there are some paraprofessionals, there are, as, as Mr. Jokula mentioned, some clerical role, positions in there, there are some administrative roles, like the, the social, emotional learning director, and then some roles that would be unaffiliated, like an athletic trainer is someone that has unique hours, that comes and supports the athletic programs and, and the student's ability to be, you know, the student athlete's ability to be prepared to compete and or recover or avoid injuries, in addition to a, a human resources-type specialist, which, given as, again, Superintendent Jokula noted, with the hiring challenges that all districts are facing, and yet the need for us to invest in especially those bullet point areas, I think you should see a theme in a lot of the positions that are running through the schools, interventionists in literacy and math. I mean, we've all seen the results nationally that students have suffered through, especially during the pandemic, and it's most targeted in English and math. English language learners, they need support. It's a challenging, when you get a 17-year-old language learner in your high school, you have one year to try to get that person to language proficiency, and these challenges happen, and at different times, of course, it's preferable if they can come in in first and second grade, but you can see investments in those types of roles because those are where our kids need it the most, and we're given the Additional Student Opportunity Act funding, especially to address those bullet point areas. And I think, again, the theme, the principals, and I think the directors did a great job of kind of coming forward with these proposals for these types of positions here. I'm sorry to interrupt.
Miss question?
Yes.
What is the APL director again?
That'd be a social, emotional learning director. Yep. And really focused on identifying curriculum that's pre-K through 12 for the district, strategies to support staff and students, especially in the fact that we know that people learn through emotions as much as they do cognitively as well. And that was not known as well 10 years ago. So being on the forefront of trying to prepare our staff and our kids to be, you know, aware of that and find those best practices is really that type of role, and it would be an exciting position. And again, it's one of our Student Opportunity Act target areas, you know, expanding supports for student emotional needs. And we know that it's super challenging in terms of, of teaching, and, and that type of learning would be something that would really, that type of role would support.
Is this a good time for questions, or you need to finish?
We have a few more slides on the capital plan. We can, I can... We have a few more slides on the capital plan, we can, I can jump right to that if that's.
Before we go to the capital.
I just, any question? Have we filled any of these positions yet, the new positions?
We have not. These are proposed, and of course, running them through resource subcommittee and school committee now, and not complete, there may be additional, you know, positions that could...
additions and deletions.
Yeah, for sure.
So, you know, one thing I shared with the team, and actually, I'll share it with all of you after the meeting, there was an, well, it was an opinion in the New York Times yesterday, and it was really more than an opinion, it was a research summary finding by professors of education and economics, one at Harvard and one at Stanford, and talked about really, you know, the impacts of the pandemic, you know, the students who suffered the most, but also, they looked at other categories in terms of, you know, death rates in communities, depression rates in the communities, which, again, as we look at the type of positions that we're looking to fill, again, the clinical interventionists, we've hired double-digit numbers of clinical support over the last couple of years. Again, you know, the math needs of our students and students nationally have taken a hit, and we really are investing heavily there. In normal times, we'd try to address that need just from Title I, which is a federal grant, but these positions exceed what that Title I grant can support, which is usually a little over two million dollars, so that's why they're not called Title I teachers, they're called interventionists. So, those positions are going to be in the city budget. Again, English second language, we have needs throughout the district, as Mr. Roach said, we have students moving into our community who might be seventeen years old, and, you know, we need to do what we can to make sure that by the time they graduate or eligible to graduate from Fitchburg High or Goodrich Academy, that we've prepared them the best as we possibly can. But also, you know, looking at the investments at the elementary and early childhood age, if we can really achieve the goal and the vision at their early childhood center now, post-re-districting, of making sure our students are ready when they go to the elementary schools, that'll be a huge win for our students, because research shows that the biggest impact are in the early years of education. So, that's where, you know, we're not excluding the high school or the middle schools in favor of the earlier grades, but again, the needs and the opportunities are across the district, and again, we're extremely fortunate that with this level of support, and I just want to welcome Mr. Lamy here, former superintendent, where if, you know, if anybody said to him, "Mr. Lamy, your funding will be increasing sixteen million dollars over two years." Yeah, right.
Maybe not in the entire time.
Yeah. So, it's, again, it's, the name of the funding is Student Opportunity Act, but it's an opportunity not only for the students, but also for the staff and the parents, and again, it's more than test scores, and however the test scores will be administered in future years, the state is going out to bid for a new MCAS in the twenty-five school year, so, and I think there's a recognition, at least by the commissioner, and, you know, where we're at in this new environment, and what we really need to focus on and maybe spend a little bit less time testing students, so, and, you know, making learning and teaching more fun again.
Mr. Jokula. It could be a little misleading to the public what we need out there, because some of the positions are promotable positions and some are transferable positions, so that you're going to have classroom teachers, you know, might be third or fourth grade teachers or whatever, will apply for these positions and fill them, so we're going to fill them from our own staff.
Yes.
And we're going to have to hire second, third, fourth, fifth grade teachers. So, we still, we still need classroom teachers out there, not just this.
Yeah, this is almost like the domino theory.
Apply for those classroom positions.
Yeah.
Yes, that's...
So, again, and really, which I think substantiates the need to have additional help in human resources, because once those positions start moving, to make sure everything gets posted quickly, the principals need to hire people immediately, it's a competitive market, we want to be able to show those who are interested in working with the Fitchburg Public Schools that we're responsive and you want to work here. So, are we ready for...
Let me inject something, just for the viewing public, but also for the committee. The school department budget comprises just under half of the entire city budget, almost fifty percent, seventy-three million, nine hundred and fifty thousand is the number I've got.
That's the direct spend portion.
Right, right, yeah. So, this is, obviously, the lion's share of what we need to deal with on a budgetary, in a budgetary manner, so I just wanted to point that out, that it's certainly the lion's share of what we spend at the city level, and it's a tribute to our respect for the importance of education, so I wanted that to be said, let the public understand that.
Thank you.
I think he said to Mr. Mayor that you provide not just the minimum, but you usually exceed the minimum that the city has to spend.
Don't speak too soon. Yes.
Well, I know, but you...
Three hundred and twenty dollars so far.
I don't care, we've had the years where...
That's important, that's hard to do.
We've been short, and it had to be made up, but the mayor really works hard to make sure he meets and exceeds net school spending.
Yeah, for sure, I mean, when we see the prices of insurance rising like it is, I mean, it's hard to do, so that is agreed, a testament to the city's will, that the importance of education for the community is unwavering.
And I think, Mayor, it's important that you said that for a variety of reasons. You know, our staff has been, you know, they've been more than essential, that term has almost became cliche over the last few years, but our staff showed up and really demonstrated their adaptability, going from, you know, fully remote, hybrid, then coming back, I think, you know, there was a perception, probably by a lot of people, not just in Fitchburg, but nationally, is, okay, once schools reopen, we're going to be back to normal, and almost everything is different, right? So, we're doing our best to adapt, to meet the needs of our students and our parents, and, again, narrow those achievement and opportunity gaps, and, you know, having, you know, this type of support from the city and state are crucial to, for our students to make progress, so when they do graduate, they can leave fulfilling lives and careers and be good citizens who can come back and talk about whatever topic they're interested in, from the city council or school committee, or with the governor, as we saw a few weeks back.
Yeah. I can move into the capital plan, if that's appropriate.
The baton is passed.
Okay.
In the spirit of the Crocker Field Relief.
Yeah, well, and I know there is a, I just would put a plug in for the Crocker Field Restoration Committee's work to try to generate donations, I heard another citizen mention it earlier as well, certainly want to make sure that the investment in our facilities is there, and something like Crocker Field is certainly a huge part of that. So, the capital plan, I'll run through it quickly, we are increasing general funds to support the work that we have in progress and in plans to improve, you know, both deferred maintenance projects, but also kind of large-scale improvements and renovations at the facilities. I'll show a chart in a second that gives the age of each facility and a rating that was done about five or six years ago, but we will be increasing general funds, the proposed amount is from six hundred thousand to one point one million in our capital expenditures line item, again, we can spend up to one hundred forty-nine thousand, nine hundred ninety-nine dollars on maintenance projects, as they're referred to, in school finance in Massachusetts, so we intend to do that. In addition, we do have emergent, the elementary and secondary school emergency relief funds for both two and three, the phasing is now into the third year, heading into the third year, that's a significant amount of sixteen million that we'll be getting, that's completely above and beyond the budget that we just reviewed, but much of that is targeted to specific things like improving heating, ventilation, air conditioning, improving airflow in buildings, so that ties in well with a number of the projects that we have in the works. In addition, we have a large grant that's the Improving Ventilation and Air Quality Grant, IVAQ, and we are engaged with the Mass School Building Authority, MSBA, for three projects right now, the Crocker Elementary School, as we know, they've contributed forty-two million there, Long Joe Windows and Doors, which is set to kick off in June, in July of this summer, completing all the windows and doors at that facility, three point three million, and then unit ventilators at South Street, Reinhold and Memorial, in addition to rooftop units, we'll be using that IVAC grant for that, and then we do have, we'll get the design for the Long Joe Boiler, which is an MSBA project, the estimation is a million there. This was a rating that was done on the facilities with the age of the facility as well, so you can see that we do have some facilities that, you know, this was a report that was completed when we were considering the Mass School Building Authority for new building in addition to other projects, so it's a requirement of that, but as you can see, we need to do some work, we do have that increasing enrollment, and we do have an increasing staff as we're proposing, in addition to what has been done, so there is a number of things that need to happen when your average age of your building is sixty-three point six years old. So, we have hired an owners' project manager to help us with the complexities of public construction, we have a number of those projects are listed there, they are all in progress, in fact, we will be interviewing designers on May twenty-fifth, and the designers is the required step in the design build, design bid build kind of system that Massachusetts has in place, so designing takes two or three months, but the focus is really those HVAC upgrades, a huge auditorium renovation at Long Joe, Fitchburg High School door replacements, exterior doors, in addition to a walk-in freezer, that really would be the hub for food for the schools, for the city. Goodrich, a roof repair and brick repainting, and then all schools, a surveillance system upgrade, and actually starting a phone system upgrade in just about a month. So, estimated cost right now is eleven million for these projects, but the likelihood is that's actually maybe going to be higher. This is a lot to look at, but these are the projects already completed this year, or currently in progress or in planning. I'll point out, Mr. Stevens mentioned an exciting one, but you can see that even this year alone, we've either spent or encumbered eight, nearly eight and a half million dollars on projects that would be considered deferred maintenance or significant enhancements to the overall facility, like the surveillance system or phone system upgrade. The one that I think Mr. Stevens was mentioning was, just this past week, we got a quote to replace all of the floors in eight classrooms at Goodrich, Mr. Hughes, have a great night, to scrape and prime and paint all eight classrooms at Goodrich Academy, and also scrape, prime, and paint all of the ceilings in the eight classrooms at Goodrich, it's a hundred ten thousand, the veterans, construction team, great group to work with, and they're also soon to be back as a city on-call contractor, so that'll be great stuff for the kids and teachers, and it's what they deserve, as we know. So, moving on, we're kind of closing in on the budget book, you'll have that a week before our June fifth, I think it's June sixth, final reading, and that'll give you a big overview of that, in addition to a May thirtieth resource subcommittee meeting, so I'll just jump back here if anybody has questions.
Go through the, uh, may I?
Yes.
Can you go through the one after that? Do something there that I didn't, the last thing, it says forty-four, Wanisuk Road, what's that?
Yeah, so that's a building that's owned by the city, that's currently the school building maintenance headquarters, in addition to, I know the library is storing some materials there, I think the police use it as well, certainly the city, the city's director of facilities uses it in addition.
The next thing that I wanted to ask is, the Department of Education and Fitchburg State University are stressing that Future Focus Administrator will focus on things like developing curriculums that deals with anti-racism. Have we addressed anything with that in the preparation of the budget?
So, I would go back to this slide here, because high-quality curriculum materials, I think, if I heard you correctly...
Correct, that's the first point, uh-huh, we're going to spend the funds.
There has been, and we'll have this certainly for the second reading, but it will be in the budget book, the significant investment in curriculum that has taken place, and not to say it's just social studies, but certainly the social studies curriculum has been upgraded well over a million dollars in the last year. There, I think, to your point, many, these are curriculum materials that are new, that have been vetted by various committees that assess anti-bias, that assess for the types of things that may have been found in, you know, older textbooks, especially in that content area. Again, we'll have a breakdown of all of those curriculum kind of purchases, because not all have been, would be doing in this budget cycle necessarily, and not all out of the foundation budget, but some from Esser or another grant or something along like that.
Okay, and another little question, what percentage of the city budget does the school is used to fund the schools? I'm not sure if you said fifty percent, fifty percent?
Forty-nine, just under, it's forty-nine point four percent.
Forty-nine point four percent, okay. And you're looking at the budget for twenty twenty-three, twenty-four?
Twenty-four.
Okay.
Twenty-four, fiscal, right.
Yeah, the state sets...
Is that letter out yet, Mr. Mayor? I couldn't...
No, not yet.
Okay.
Not yet, it will be very shortly, next two days.
Yeah, so so far, the last one that was there was one forty-six million, four hundred eighty thousand.
Yeah, it's about one forty-nine, it's just shy of a hundred and fifty million, yeah.
Thank you.
Are we still on questions for the whole thing?
I'm done.
We're taking, yeah?
Quick one, charter reimbursement went down three hundred thousand dollars, and that was like down twenty, twenty-five percent of what it was last year, is that just because their population didn't come back, you know, did they have that less students, that's what we owe them? Why was it so much less?
I missed the, I didn't get the whole question.
The charter reimbursement was down three hundred thousand dollars, which represented, I believe, around like twenty to twenty-five percent of what we were giving them? Does anyone have any insight?
It could change too. That could change as well.
Right.
So, I think the city auditor does a great job of determining the best estimate for what the indirect costs are, and one of those is that charter school tuition reimbursement.
Okay, isn't that Calvin, who does that?
Yeah, but...
Shout out Calvin.
That's, the charter school reimbursement formula has changed over the years, where it used to be a longer term of reimbursing districts, so now it's shorter term, so I think when we see that decrease here of, oh, where they're, okay, I have to look over here, I can see it better.
About two hundred seventy-four.
Yeah, about two hundred seventy-four thousand dollars. To me, what that tells me is there's less students that have that longer, I guess, tail, that reimbursement formula, this might be related to like going from, I think it was a five or six-year reimbursement, until now it's like, I think, three, so a lot of those laggard years or far-out years, so to speak, are dropping off, so now you're seeing those decreases appear to be a little bit more sudden here.
That's just notable, stood out to me. All right, thank you for that explanation.
Another question, with the SOA funding, are we addressing anything that has to do with diversity, equity, and inclusion, like having a director, a district-wide director, you know, to meet the needs of the students?
Well, we don't have one planned in this budget at this time, and the reason is, that's the work of all our staff, to have high expectations for all our students and for all our teachers to have high expectations and have collective ownership, that's something that last year when we had Dr. Amonte Jackson, I don't know if you, I think... think you, you might have said it on Zoom or two of those, Dr. Knight, I can't remember. As we, Mr. Thompson and I recently attended a, a program for superintendents really centered around anti-racism. The work is having high expectations for all our students from a, from a DBIE perspective, and that's something that we believe is consistent with our values. But again, that's something that takes time and, you know, whether it be co-teaching, they're not just, we don't have just multi-language learner students or students on IEPs, they're all our students. So that is the work of, of everyone.
Yes, thank you for that. Mr. Superintendent, diversity, equity, and inclusion director is a position that is evidence-based, that supports the improvement of students in, in the different school district. We have large school districts right here in the state of Massachusetts that, that are advocating these positions, especially when the, the demographics of the school districts are similar to the ones that we have. You know, do you mind looking in into that some more?
Yeah, I, yeah, I'll, again, I'll say that I can tell you that right now, all school districts are attempting to diversify their staff. Again, from four years ago, when we had Dr. Akuma Noadiki present the inclusivity appraisal and looking at all our demographics, now this is about four years ago, Massachusetts is the third least diverse state in terms of teacher representation. We're, you know, when the commissioner came to visit with the governor, walking up the stairway with him, we're trying to, we're trying to hire, we can't even find teachers right now. And, and I think everybody is trying to figure out different pathways to expand our, our teacher pool, including more diverse staff. So it's something that, to make a long answer short, it's something that we're working on, we're working with Pittsburgh State, trying to get our students to have that educator pathway there. The state has approved $25,000 scholarships for up to 375 students statewide who are interested in becoming teachers. The details are not yet finalized on that, but that's something that we're working with Dr. Nancy Murray over at Pittsburgh State to try to help, help on that front.
One last thing, we do have a, a woman of color graduating from Tufts University that's working over at Central Office. Are we doing anything to retain her here in the district? I mean, she's graduating, I forgot what her, her major's in.
Yeah.
But are we doing anything to try to retain people like her in the district?
Well, I would say we're.
Before she goes away and goes somewhere else?
I, I can't get into conversations about any particular staff member.
Got it, got it.
Okay.
But I just, I just let you know that, don't let her, don't let her go away.
I hope she doesn't, and she has a lot to offer.
Don't let her go away.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions, comments?
Good of you, I appreciate it.
So we'll be back in three weeks.
Yeah, it's the first Monday in June, and we have a resource meeting on May 30th.
So we're still, we're, we're getting down to, our pencils have been sharpened, but there's still some more sharpening to do. And again, we have a lot of positions that we're looking to add, ultimately all helping our students be more successful and providing them the, the teaching staff that, to meet the students' needs. So with that, move to the, the next item, at least under budget. We have a donation of, from Linwood Tree Service and Inground for Ingrid Gardens.
Yes.
Air Services, free of charge, looks like they donated some services to help maintain the memorial garden at Pittsburgh High School. So we want to thank the Linwood Tree Service for, for their help on helping maintain this important memorial. Then we just have tonight the second reading of the attendance policy, number 5112, attendance at Pittsburgh High School. If there's anything to add there, Mr. Horgan, or?
Um, not much. When we first brought this to the committee, it was brought back to the subcommittee for a few typos, and I think we fixed those. The real constructive language that we added was just at the end of it, which was a, you know, state-mandated lettering, and it references the general law chapter here of consecutive absences for 16-year-olds, and kind of the process going through that. You can read it at the end of the policy, hopefully you guys read it beforehand. But other than this paragraph ending the policy, which prompted a good discussion in the subcommittee, you know, that's really the only constructive thing that's being added to this policy, besides the typos that we fixed. I think most of them were grammatical. So if anyone has a question.
Mr. Horgan, I think this, the policy, you, the subcommittee should be commended. It's comprehensive, I like it.
Thank you.
Seems to have all the, all the right buttons in it. Thanks, thank you.
Thank you so much. I'll tip my hat to the Central Office, they have an incredible team, and they help us with this a lot.
Well, you know, we, we use the metaphor now, it's, it's becoming more, it's becoming a better-tuned motor.
I would just like to make one comment.
Please.
And it's, I agree with the policy 100%. And this is to the superintendent, that the administration realize and be told that this is the school committee policy, and it is to be followed. And principals or teachers are not to implement their own policies at any individual school, but to follow the school committee policy.
Duly noted.
Okay. That's it, all set?
We're ready for action items, Mr. Mayor.
We have two, we'll do them individually. 23-266, approve the duration of time, tools, material, and professional assistance to help maintain Memorial Garden at Pittsburgh High School from Linwood Tree and Snow Service and Ingrid's Gardens.
Motion to accept.
Motion made and seconded to accept. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, is unanimous, thank you. Next, 23-267, approve the superintendent's recommendation to accept the second reading of policy 5112, attendance at Pittsburgh High School. Motion made?
Seconded.
And seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, is unanimous, no need for executive session at this time. Have motion adjourned.
Second.
Motion made and seconded adjourned, all in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
All right.